All right, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting order. My name's Steve Boginski. I'm the president of the Rotary Club in Adonia Hills. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. John, could you give our invocation, please?
Sure. Let's be in a humble spirit of prayer. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this gorgeous day. We pray for those who are suffering from COVID-19, both from the standpoint of their health and from the standpoint of their employment or their business. Use the food that we're eating this noon, dear God, to give us the strength to follow your will. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. And Pledge of Allegiance, please. Debbie, could you throw a screensaver of the flag, or if people want to look? Oh, my flag's not showing. Yes, could you put the flag up, please, Deb? Thank you. Could we all recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I'd like to introduce our Rotary guest today. Our guest speaker today is Tim Gingerich. Welcome, Tim. Thank you for joining us today.
Thank you.
I also have my daughter Amanda and wife Debbie in the background. I see Amanda found herself a nice Rotary background. I'm very impressed, Amanda. Thank you. Do we have any other guests with us today?
The mother.
My mother's lurking in the background over there? Welcome, Mom.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. I don't see Casey Wright. Does anybody have any today in history? If not, I have pulled a few things up. Let's see, in 1615, French explorer Samuel de Chaplin discovers Lake Huron. I figured that was nice because we all enjoy Lake Erie, so I thought the discovery of Lake Huron was kind of interesting. It was a seventh voyage to the New World, way back in 1615 on this day. In 1868, the Fourteenth Amendment to the Constitution would guarantee citizenship to all those born or naturalized in the United States as adopted. So if you were born in the United States back in, you know, 1868, since then, if you're born here, you are an American citizen. 1965, President Lyndon B. Johnson sent 50,000 troops to South Vietnam. That was a sad day. Famous birthday today, Jacqueline Kennedy Onassis, wife of President John F. Kennedy. Her birthday would have been today. And that's all I have as far as history.
Good.
Yep, go ahead. Thought someone was gonna add something. All right, so we do have some birthdays today. Carl?
Ooh.
Yeah, Carl, your birthday's tomorrow, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
Happy birthday, Carl.
Well, thank you. I didn't, my, my sound keeps cutting out.
Well, it's Carl's birthday, and on Wednesday is John Bosco's birthday. I don't see John joined us today, but happy birthday to Carl and John both. Do you want to sing happy birthday to you, Carl?
No. I know how old I am. I don't want to count them anymore, and I don't want to hear everybody sing. No, we're good, unless Bill wants to sing, but that's up to Bill.
Hey, I say unto thee, nay.
Thank you. No, thanks, everyone.
Okay, and we got a couple anniversaries. Nick Molnar and Jennifer.
Whoa.
18 years. July 27th, huh, Nick? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Congratulations. And last, last week, Joe Clark and Amy Clark, 26 years, July 23rd, is their anniversary. And I'm not sure if I'm supposed to tell you this, but Joe Clark is now my new neighbor in Boston Heights. They just moved in Saturday. So congrats. I surprised him. He had no idea I lived there. I wasn't sure if he was disappointed or happy. He's now our new neighbor. So those are our anniversaries and birthdays with our club. If I forgot anything, everybody let me know if I forgot anyone's birthday. Let's see. Humor of the day. How about Dr. Conko? I bet you have a good joke for us.
Yes, we do. Actually, it's a contribution from your dad, past President Robin.
Oh, boy.
And keep in mind, anybody has a good one that they want to send my way, I'm taking contributions anytime. Moses and Jesus were in a threesome playing golf one day. Moses pulled up to the tee and drove a long one. The ball landed in the fairway, but rolled directly toward a water hazard. Quickly, Moses raised his club, the water parted, and it rolled to the other side. It's safe and sound. Next, Jesus strolled up to the tee and hit a nice long one directly towards the same water hazard. It landed right in the center of the pond and kind of hovered over the water. Jesus casually walked out on the pond and chipped the ball into the green. The third guy got up and randomly whacked the ball. It headed out over a fence and into oncoming traffic on a nearby street. It bounced off a truck and hit a nearby tree. From there, it bounced onto the roof of a shack close by and rolled down into the gutter, down the drain spout, out onto the fairway, and straight towards the aforementioned pond. On the way to the pond, the ball hit a stone and bounced out over the water, onto a lily pad where it rested quietly. Suddenly, a very large bullfrog jumped up on the lily pad and snatched the ball into his mouth. Just then, an eagle swooped down and grabbed the frog and flew away. As they passed over the green, the frog squealed in fright and dropped the ball, which bounced right into the cup for a hole-in-one. Moses turned to Jesus and said, "I hate playing with your dad."
That's funny. I like that one.
I happened to stumble across one the other day.
Yeah.
This is, this is shorter, but I don't know. This, his is probably better. Cable War Pan Man was on my street and asked me what time it was. I told him it was between 8:00 AM and 1:00 PM. That's a good one.
Anybody else want to make us laugh?
I didn't get it.
Well, cable is...
Is that a time joke? Laugh when you get time?
That's right.
All righty, happy or sad dollars for today?
I've got some. I'm happy baseballers started, and I'm sad it might end in the same week.
Yeah, I second that. Yep, it'll be interesting to see what happens with those Marlins today. And the other team they played. I'll give a happy dollar. Happy that Tim's joining us today. Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, this is a newspaper week. I just picked them up at the printers, and they'll be going out today, so you know, that always makes me happy. Sorry, Rotary's not on the front page this week.
You didn't come get my picture?
Yeah, I should probably, you know, actually, I was thinking about having a spot in the paper directly for the Rotary and like, what the next meeting is, kind of like a little ad. We should probably do that.
Good. And I'll put one more dollar out. I've mentioned it early, but I'm happy that Joel Clark is now my neighbor across the street. That'll be good. We're, we're, it was a pleasant surprise for both of us on Saturday. We got quite a giggle out of that. So, anybody else? Okay, with that being said, I would like to introduce our keynote speaker today. His name is Tim Gingerich. He's with SpotOn. That's a powerful software and payment solutions company. Tim's work experience, of course, is with SpotOn since 2019 to present, is with Flowers Baking Company, area sales director from 2005 to 2019. Snyder Lance Account Manager from 2000 to 2004. Tim went to college at Lafayette College Eastern PA, Bachelor of Arts, History and Economics Business. Tim resides in Ohio City with his wife Paula, and they have a son Kemper. Please join me in welcoming Tim Gingerich. Is that how I pronounce it, Tim? How do you pronounce your last name?
Gingerich. Got it.
Gingerich. Thanks, Tim. Thanks for joining us today.
No problem. All right. A little technical problem right now. I'm gonna try to work through it.
No problem. Take your time.
There we go. Well, again, thank you, everyone, for the warm welcome today, and I work for SpotOn. And a little bit about my background, I was in the food industry for over 19 years. And in various key account positions and, and management as well. And just got to a point last summer where I came to the conclusion that, you know, I need to make a change. And one day, I got a LinkedIn request from SpotOn asking me if I was interested in learning about their account executive. And I had a few interviews, and what really struck me was just their whole philosophy on how they want to help small businesses succeed. And basically, help grow revenue and save time. So, again, SpotOn, we, we offer powerful business software and payment solutions sized to fit any business, but our real focus is on small business. And the next slide here, I pulled up some statistics about small businesses. And small businesses account for 99.9% of all US firms, and they employ just a hair under 48% of all private sector employees. And they account for just a hair under 62% of new jobs. And here's what's interesting, well, the survival rate, so five-plus years, it's 50%, and then 10-plus years, it's at 33%. And there are, I'm gonna show you an example of four reasons why this percentage is what it is. So here are four real challenges facing small businesses today's market. First one is just staying competitive with larger companies and competition, really capitalize on new technology that smaller businesses might not know about or have accessibility to. And then the second one is finding time to really just engage with our customers online to improve their foot traffic in the stores and boost customer retention. And then this is kind of where SpotOn comes in, when it comes to lack of service from providers, including payment processors, software vendors, point-of-sale and retailers who rely on self-service models. And with SpotOn, I'm, like I said, I'm the local account representative, so I'm the person that actually does the training on the point-of-sale and does the installs as well. So it's not like the equipment's just shipped to a business and the merchant has to figure it out for their own. And then another final point is just the predatory pricing modes that the majority of merchant service providers provide to merchants. That includes, you know, the fursome contracts where it's, you know, two-to-four-year contracts, the countless junk fees, the PTI compliance fees, and finally, just the high processing rates when it comes to processing card payments. Now, one of the segments, when a merchant does agree to partner with SpotOn when it comes to payment processing, is we have something we call customer engagement. And what it does is it really allows the merchants to really gain a competitive, excuse me, advantage in the marketplace. And these are just kind of real, real basic marketing strategies that, like I said, when a merchant does partner with SpotOn, we provide these services to the merchant. And the first one is emails, and emails actually, as it says on the screen there, delivers the highest return on investment for marketers. And you can see there are kind of the three bullet points. For collecting customer email addresses, kind of real successful small businesses are really putting out their two-to-four marketing emails. And, you know, that can be, you know, if it's a new business, a company introduction, you know, maybe a monthly newsletter, kind of what's going on with the business. If it's retail, you know, seasonal products that they have and services, special events, and of course, you know, when COVID struck, basically providing customers what they knew their new business hours were. And the next segment is deals, and 40% of people say email deals are a big incentive for making purchases at a small business. And kind of the successful ones are putting out to their customers three deals per week. And, and when I say put a deal out, they actually put, you know, a time restrictions, really, in the consumer's eye. It's some urgency on them to actually take it upon themselves to look at the deal and make a purchase. And, you know, the two successful ways to do deals are of course through email and then social media. And then finally, social media. Social media is just a great way for merchants to interact with their customers. And then another segment that we offer, when a merchant does partner with us, is review management. And here's an interesting statistic. 92% of customers regularly read business reviews before they make a visit. So that's really huge when it comes to, you know, if someone does have a good or bad experience. We actually provide a service where the merchant's actually notified of a review, whether it's a Google review or a Yelp review. And then the merchant can actually respond to that review, positive or negative. So that's just another real nice functionality that we offer. And it does, you do respond, you know, that's gonna help boost, you know, businesses' rating when it comes to online reviews. And then another functionality that we offer is a customer loyalty program, and that's actually how SpotOn got started back in 2010, was through a digital customer loyalty program. And then, I think, four or five years after that, that's when the payment process came into play for SpotOn. And with our loyalty, it makes it real easy for customers to enroll because they can do it right on the point-of-sale. And then, pretty much, you have the ability to set up whatever type of reward you want. So it can be spots by dollars, or it can be spots by visits. So that's just a nice way for a merchant to, you know, put up their loyalty program to really allow customers to repeat in visits. Like I said, SpotOn, like I said, our real focus is with local, small business owners and operators. And, you know, we really do understand all the challenges that small businesses face, not just on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly basis. And services that we provide really allow the merchant to save time and get more revenue each and every interaction they have with a customer. So that's the actual goal of SpotOn. So like I said, you can see here now, so this is kind of our ecosystem. So you can see up top here, here's all that's included when a merchant partners with us to process. So of course, you have the payment side, you have the digital marketing, you have the review management. You have the virtual terminal where merchants can actually go to their site and process transactions, whether it's for reoccurring billing or a one-time sale. And then we also have a mobile dashboard app where the merchant can basically, on their mobile phone, they have all the functionality that they need to basically see all their interactions and transactions instantaneously. And then we also have a mobile app where we provide a mobile swiper that actually attaches itself, where you can run transactions on your mobile phone. And then some of the additional add-ons that we have are our loyalty program, our appointments, online ordering for restaurants and beverage merchants. And then we also have something nice, too. We actually offer, for any new merchant, 100 free customized gift cards that are actually reusable. Those can actually be used on our point-of-sale devices for merchants to redeem them from customers. And then they can also check the balance on the cards as well. But that's just a nice added bonus. We offer merchants that come on board with. So again, here is, like I said, here's just our basic platform described in more detail. So when it comes to payment processing, you know, so, you know, I work with my existing merchants and new merchants to basically find a point-of-sale terminal that actually makes the most sense for them. So, and like I said, we offer straight transparent pricing. We have next-day funding, and like I said, no hidden fees or junk fees. We take care of the PTI compliance fees. So like I said, the rate that you're quoted, that's what you'll see every month when you take a look at your process statements. Again, the marketing, and this is all digital marketing, and like I said, allows the merchant to send out deals to allow customers to come back. Deals, you can actually target emails, and you can also develop social media campaigns as well. And what's nice about when you partner with us also is that you actually will have, besides myself, you'll have a designated customer engagement person that will actually help the merchants, you know, go through and actually set up these marketing emails and whatnot to basically put them out there to their customers. And then with the reviews, like I said, review management, I mean, really, what we provide, I mean, it really allows the merchant to really gain a real grasp on what online reputation is. And then again, the virtual terminal, like I said, run transactions from the dashboard. And we also have card-on-file capabilities and then surcharge capabilities as well. And again, the mobile dashboard app, where you can monitor your payments. So pretty much anything that you can do from the desktop, you can actually do it on your mobile. Then of course, finally, the SpotOn mobile, where you can take payments on the go. This is a free service as well, and same with the mobile Bluetooth card reader. And the mobile app and the swiper, as with all of our point-of-sale systems, it accepts the tips and swipes as well. We also accept Google Pay and Apple, along with all the major other partner. And again, here's just the, the additional add-ons that we offer, the loyalty program, appointments, online ordering, which really helped a lot of the restaurant beverage merchants that are my clients when COVID hit because they're able to get that online ordering set up and running in pretty much 72 hours, which was great. And again, the gift card. So basically, you know, here's just some statistics on why, the five reasons why small businesses really need services that we offer. You know, 90% of customers read online reviews before visiting a business, you know. 71% of millennials prefer to book appointments online using their mobile phone. And with our appointment software, the merchant will get notified right on their phone about an upcoming appointment. And then 61% of people want to hear from brands through email rather than any other type of messaging, whether it's text messaging as an example. And then 65% of millennials place pickup or delivery orders using their mobile app or an online ordering from a restaurant website. And like I said, that functionality really helped out the beverage and restaurant owners during, when COVID started. And right here's just some examples of the point-of-sale options that we offer. So the one to the left, our restaurant point-of-sale system is cloud-based, and it's pretty much the Rolls-Royce when it comes to restaurant point-of-sale. And what's nice about it is basically, a restaurant or beverage merchant can actually build their own point-of-sale system. So with the functionality that we allow in the front of the house and back of the house. And when it comes to the back of the house, we're able to offer, I believe it's 25 different ports that the back-of-the-house owner or manager is able to be, have accessibility to. And then the next one here is the point device. That's kind of a hybrid between a basic terminal and a, basically, a wireless type of device. And you can add catalogs and whatnot. It's a forward-facing for the merchant and then also the customer. And then our register point-of-sale system is state-of-the-art. And I believe it can hold up to, I believe it's 5,000 to 7,000 different items in a, in an inventory. And our register light, that kind, that actually has been released probably four or five months ago. So it's pretty much the same functionality as our register, but in the more compact type of functionality when it comes to point-of-sale. And there's an example of our, our mobile swiper there. I mean, I said it accepts dibs, swipes, and taps as well. And then we have three offices in the US. We're based out of San Francisco where our corporate office is, and then we have an office in Chicago, and then Detroit. And then we also have an office in Mexico City, and then one in Berlin, Germany as well. So we're not just based in the US. We're actually based in South America as well, and then Europe, and then we do have somewhere east in Asia, and then in Australia as well. And what I really like to go over with everyone is just really our unparalleled support that SpotOn offers. Like I said, I'm the local account executive with SpotOn, and I'm an employee of SpotOn. And like I said, I do all the point-of-sale installations. I do all the training with, with the merchants. And we do offer 24/7, 365, US-based customer support. And I'll just give you an example. So I have a yacht club that's a merchant of mine. And a lot of times, the servers, they actually forget to put in the tips before they close out and swipe a customer's credit card. And all the office manager has to do, which she calls customer support, and she has a copy of the, of the receipt. She has the last four of the card number, and just lets customer service know, hey, here's what happened. You know, I need a tip rekeyed, give the tip amount, and it's taken care of. And then it's in the merchant's account in two to three days because the previous supplier they were using, they didn't have that functionality. So they're just tickled thinking that they're able to do that, which is great. And like I said, finally, you know, every merchant has their own specific customer engagement specialist who will really walk the merchant through, after they signed up, you know, everything that we offer and really helps the merchant get the most from our SpotOn platform. And like I said, I thank, thank you for the opportunity today to let you know a little bit about what I do and what SpotOn offers small businesses. Does, does anyone have any questions at all?
I do. John Graves, when I went to the Rotary Convention in Toronto, it seemed like all the restaurants I went to, the servers had, had a mobile device. And so they would walk up to your table, they would show you your bill, you would pay right there, and they give you the receipt. And I haven't seen anything like that in the United States. Sometimes, I know at Apple, at least, they have a unit on the table, but, but do you think there's any? You, you see any, any growth in, in mobile devices by servers?
Yeah, I mean, we actually offer, with our, with our restaurant point-of-sale, actually tablets that's, you know, the server can actually bring to the customer to, if, you know, they can have it where, you know, the waitress does the ordering for them, keys it in, or they can actually give the actual pad to the customer, and they can actually put their order in. And we actually just released about two weeks ago, the QSR functionality where the QSR functionality where that's where we have QSR code. And it's available on every single table, say at a restaurant. And all the customer has to do is just scan that code and they can actually put their order in. The, the QSR code actually takes them to the online restaurant site where they can actually put their order in and actually pay for order from the, right from the online site.
Yeah, I agree. I can see, I can see your business growing with, considering what's going on with the, with the COVID and all that. Because John was right, when I was over in Europe, and this was before the COVID hit, that's how they did it. The waitress or waiter was there, right there with their point at, at point of sale phone and their scanner. They scan your credit card. And, and back then, one of the main reasons why you never see your credit card leave your site. And, and that's a big deal too, you know, because, you know, when they walk away with your credit card, you never know what they're doing with it. With a, at a point of sale area, you, you always see the credit card. And now, you know, I can see where you're, you're ordering online, like you say, with the QR reader and your paper right away and the, and the waitress comes and delivers your food and everything's already taken care of. I think it's just, considering the way things are right now, it's just a fantastic idea.
Yeah.
Have you seen your sales grow a lot since this COVID thing has been happening?
Yeah, like I said, with restaurants and beverage merchants, I've really seen, you know, a real uptake, you know, when it comes to the new business, you know, and I've been able to onboard a lot of new restaurants and merchant, beverage merchants as a result.
Right.
You know, like I said, that's the whole thing with Spot On is that, because we're month to month, we don't have any long-term contracts. So, you know, whatever, I have to earn my business, well, my merchant's business each and every month. And that's what I really love about the whole month-to-month concept, you know? And actually, since I've started, I haven't had one merchant cancel their service for Spot On. So, and like I said, I really take, you know, consultative type approach when it comes to, you know, meeting with new merchants, you know, and basically I really want them to succeed, you know, because like I said, I, I live in Ohio City, you know, and like I said, I just have a real passion for helping small businesses out, you know, really grow their revenue and save time as well. So it's just, like I said, it's just me making the career change from, you know, the food industry to now what I'm doing, you know, it's just kind of reinvigorated me more than anything else ever in my career. So.
Right, right. I got one more question, then I'll, I'll shut up so everybody else can ask. You know, we do a few events Rotary, Rotary Club does. And so this would be something that we wouldn't want for a whole year, but for instance, we have something coming up, the Craft Food Beer Festival. I'm not even sure if it's still going to go on or not. But we did some online where you could pay online ahead of time. And there's always a lot of cash exchanging there. And if, I think credit cards, people would be more comfortable. Is this something that we could say, okay, we want to use you just for this event. So would it just be a 30-day contract with you?
Well, actually, you know, depending on what device, I mean, you wouldn't, you would just pay for the processing fees for that month. And then we wouldn't use the service, there'd be no charge for anything.
Okay.
Which are not using the device to process any card. So.
Right. Okay. This is something I was kind of interested, maybe something we want to look into in a few months.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd love to, you know, go into more detail.
Okay.
I have a question or a comment. Tim, my daughter has a bakery in Ohio City on West 25th. And this sounds like it might be a great avenue for you. It's called a cookie and a cupcake.
Okay, yeah.
They're almost right directly across from Mitchell's Ice Cream.
Okay, yeah.
Her name is Cindy Bergen. And I'm sure everyone here that has been in Rotary for a while can attest to the, the cupcakes and the cakes that she has made.
They're unbelievable.
Steve, Steve, he, you know, if he would be on time, he could have had more. No, he kept it for himself is what he did.
They were great cupcakes. Best cupcakes I've ever seen.
Yes. You might want to, you know, they're struggling now with COVID. They changed locations. They used to be in Tremont, moved over to West 25th. And it's just a matter of getting people to know that they're over there. And maybe this might be a good advantage for them.
I appreciate it. I'll definitely stop by sometime this week, introduce myself to Sydney.
All right, I'll tell you're on your way.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a question. So when it comes to like email and social media campaigns, do you provide some strategy, like analytics, and then helping people to refine their strategy so that they're going in a better direction?
Oh yeah, I mean, you know, with, with our analytics, we're actually able to, you know, fill the merchant, when's a really good time to send out the emails and the social media posts. So like I said, every single merchant has their own customer engagement. Who really works with the merchants and really maximizes everything when it comes to that.
That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, similar to the question Debbie asked. I think Debbie took my, my question. So I own a Jimmy John's restaurant there in Macedonia. And when it comes to local marketing, you know, you're kind of on your own, even though that's a franchise and though they may send out some very general emails, if there's a national campaign, but the local market, marketing are on the individual franchisee. And I've, I, I saw where you indicated that, that emails are typically more effective. And I try to limit my emails to two, one, one per month per customer. But be interesting to know if you work with any franchises in terms of coming up with analytics, because I've kind of developed my own. You mentioned time of day. I even know which customers, you know, order on Saturday or on a Sunday. So I try to send information on those days because, you know, that may be an indication in terms of when they prefer, you know, to eat my product. I don't know. But I wonder if you work with franchise, franchisees in that, in that respect in terms of the local marketing?
Yeah, to answer your question, one of the local franchisees that I actually work with is Do Eat Pizza. They're, they're a customer of mine. And I believe, I think, I know, I think there's probably three locations here in northeast Ohio. So like I said, we've really worked with them to really, you know, maximize when it comes to the social media and the email sendouts to, to their customers.
And in terms of, you know, directories or what have you, do your company also help in maybe streamlining a directory so that emails can be more synced and timed in terms of a group mailing instead of having.
I mean, the thing that we do do is that, you know, you have, you know, all your customers' emails, say on a, on a, you know, on an Excel, you know, you can just send it in the Spot On and to your customer engagement person. And they'll actually formulate that for you and actually streamline everything for you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have some questions?
Feeling like Steve, I didn't want to dominate all the questions, so I'll draw back. Very interesting presentation, by the way. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks, Latif. And yeah, Tim, you can see there's, you sparked a lot of interest with what you have to offer. So thank you so much for coming in and discussing your, your company and what you do and, and why it's become so popular. I think there's some of us that can utilize it, including our club. There may be some services that we may be able to take advantage of. Because like I said, the last time we did a couple of these events, there was a lot of cash as was exchanged. And at the event itself, they were asking us, do you take credit cards? Do you take credit cards? And, and we didn't at that time. So it's definitely something that we will, as a club, would be talking to you in the near future. So thank you.
Thank you.
So anybody else have anything for, for Tim or any questions? Yes, Julie. Oh, you're still muted, Julie.
I got it. All right. That was, that was really weird. Sometimes I like Zoom, sometimes not. Anyways, my question was, oh, no, it was a comment. You were talking about using it for an event, Steve, but you can also use this for a virtual event.
You're asking me?
No, I'm telling Steve that, you know, if we're having like a virtual raffle or something in February, instead of an in-person one, I'm like reminding Steve that you could utilize this service, even if it's not an in-person event. So I just thought that's a good point.
Very good point, Julie. And I guess that is a question. Are you seeing that a lot, Tim, where, where people, when they do, they say, because we're not having, we're, we're trying to create new ways for our club to have fundraisers and it's, it's really looking more and more like it's turning virtual. Are you seeing some customers that are utilizing you for some of their virtual fundraisers?
Yeah, actually Edgewater Yacht Club and Lakeside Yacht Club are clients of mine. And they've actually utilized that on the club to actually open, you know, whether it was their pool or whatnot. So they probably started to utilize that probably in Mayish. So yeah, they do do that. So.
Oh. Thank you, Julie. Great, great comment. Okay, is there anybody else?
Oh, I do have a quick testimonial about Jacob. Jacob, he actually invited me. So, and both he and I are members of the same BNI group. So, and I'm actually a client of Jacob's. And he did a great job.
Well, for some reason, he just froze up, Tim.
Oh.
Yeah, he just froze up, Tim. You're back now. So just when you were starting to say something nice about Jacob, we didn't hear a damn thing.
Oh, really?
Sorry, Jacob.
No, but what I was saying is, you know, I've really gotten to know Jacob since I joined the BNI group, is him back in March. And you know, not only is he, you know, am I a client of his, but I'd like to consider him, you know, a really good friend that I've actually gotten. So, but yeah, he's a really good guy. So thanks, Jacob.
I appreciate that. Oh, absolutely. And like I said, Tim, I, I think the service that you provide is great. And I think the, the thing that I like most about it is how passionate you are about it and your ability to go ahead and truly service the clients that you have. So thank you for the kind words and thank you for what you do to help out all the local businesses.
Thanks, Jacob.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thank you to you, Jacob, for bringing Tim to us. As we always know that we have a good speaker when we have a lot of questions afterwards. So thanks again, Tim, for doing a great job.
Thank you.
With that being said, I have a few announcements. Our next meeting will be August 4th. So we're actually turning over the calendar and they're going to turn into August in the next few days. Our Safety Town is coming up on August 10th through 14th. Do you have any comments regarding that, Derek?
Sure. So registration's still underway. Our first session is completely full. So that's good news. We have all 36 spots full. The second session in the evening, we have 14 spots still available. So, but all is moving forward. Teachers are ready, volunteers are ready. I'm ordering T-shirts through Kimpton today. So we'll be ready for that week of Safety Town. So.
Fantastic. And I guess we have some signs that were already put up. So, but we are, we're going to be putting some storefronts up pretty soon. So I will be putting out a note for volunteers to help us do that. So we don't have to have that done with just a couple of people. So that should be happening within the next week or so. So I'll keep, keep everyone posted on that. Our shoebox program, as mentioned earlier, we have 20 shoeboxes coming. How's the signup sheet coming, Debbie?
There's still a lot, there's still a lot of spaces open. I'd say more than half of them. So we encourage everybody to sign up. And I think it'll be a really fun project and fulfilling.
Absolutely. So we got some time with that. We're, we're not going to be receiving these shoeboxes till the end of August. So that we want to get everyone solid signed up for it. In fact, my family's already been hitting a couple of stores and starting to fill up our shoebox. So it's, it's something fun that you can do as a family. Or, or like I said, if you don't want to do one on your own, team up with somebody to, do a single shoebox. So let's just keep rolling with that. A reverse raffle is February 6th. So please put that on your calendar. We're going to start making plans for that. Please, as, as usual, keep the emergency assistance center in your, in your mind when you're shopping and drop off some canned goods and some fresh fruit for them. Does anybody else have anything to add? Do you have anything else to add, Bill, regarding the, the safety?
No, I'm going to get with Julie to get that letter. And I'll get with you as to who we can tap on getting the storefronts recommitted and sell new ones. We need to sell the new storefronts, the $500 back units. And we'll try to keep that going and coordinated. Dave is not here today because he's got two or three employees at sick. I don't know if they have COVID. I don't think they do, but they're at sick. So he's doing everything from chief bottle washer to chairman of the board. But anyhow.
Okay.
I'll be working on that.
Okay. And I'll be in touch with Dave also. And do we have a, a sheet, like an invoice sheet that the people that agree to the storefronts, we can send?
Yes, yes. I will be giving you those.
Okay, good. Because I need one for myself for my two fronts. And, and yeah, and get that list to me also, so we can decide who we need to talk to to re-enlist for these storefronts.
Okay.
Perfect. Anybody else? Fantastic. With that being said, Rotarians, I would like you to recite the four-way test of the things we think, say, or do.
First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will, will, will better friendships?
Will, will be beneficial to all concerned. Thank you, fellow Rotarians, and have a great week. And we will talk again next week. Thanks again for joining us today. Take care again, Tim.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Yep, thank you.